Five thirty PM and I'm calling to order this regular board of the regular meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will look for an approval of the agenda. Robin?
I move approval of the agenda with the Human Capital Addendum.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion from Robin and a second from Ally. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any objections? Same sign. Okay, that motion passes, nine to zero. And this evening, we are very fortunate to have a guest presentation from Patty Stedman, the NDSBA president. And we also have a very special guest, who I believe is receiving an award this evening. Welcome, Jim. Do you have a speech prepared? Oh, okay, great.
You told me I was supposed to give him the mic for the whole time. Good evening, everyone. My name is Patty Stedman, and I'm the past president for North Dakota School Boards Association, and I also serve as board chair for the West Fargo Public Schools. I've met many of you. It's good to be here. NSBA Legacy Service Award was created in 2024 to honor the North Dakota's longest-serving school board members and the impact that they've made on local school districts, their communities, and the state of North Dakota. Stephen Covey wrote a book called Speed of Trust. The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second-best time is today. In education, in life, the fruit is the best part of the planting is the seeds. Yet, fruit takes time to grow and takes watering, tending, pruning, and waiting. Planting, nurturing, and waiting, and hoping the tree will bear fruit is an apt analogy for the work of school boards, particularly in members who have committed 15 or more years in their pursuit of positive student outcomes. We honor these school board members to recognize their sacrifice and their legacy. We hope their dedication will inspire the next generation of tree planters. Before presenting the award, I'd like to take a moment just to recognize the artist who commissioned the Legacy of Service Award, Brad Bachmeier. He's a native of Anamoose who completed his degree from the University of North Dakota. Yeah. And now it is my honor to present Mr. Jim Johnson, who served the Fargo School District for 23 years. North Dakota School Boards Association Legacy Service Award and a steadfast commitment category. Jim, from the beginning of time, from began his, beginning of time.
Really early.
He told me this was an old-person award. I'm so sorry. Jim began his time with this board in August of 2001. From the start of that until the very end, Jim's goals were focused on the students of the district to which he carried out consistently and diligently. During his service, Jim played a significant role in long-range facility, guiding administrative changes, grade configurations, building and opening new schools. He has overseen the attendance boundary changes, strategic plan reviews, curriculum updates, and significant federal mandates. He also served as the Fargo Board of Education president, a negotiator, chaired the governance committee, chaired the planning committee, and the governmental affairs committee. I could not remember all those things. Jim's unwavering dedication, collaboration, and leadership earned him to be recognized as a veteran board member and a master board member for NDSBA during his board tenure. He's also had influence beyond the Fargo School District. He has served on the Southeastern Education Cooperative Board for 15 years, where we first met and worked together. He was also influential partner with NDSBA. He served on the Government Affairs Committee for 14 years as a delegate and was on the Board of Directors for nine years and served as board president for three of those years. Jim, you have left an incredible mark on your district and your community. We thank you for your vision, dedication, and of course, your service. And this is the beautiful plaque, and it has a nameplate to go with it that he gets in honor of his service.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Did you want the mic?
This truly is the old guy award.
Microphone, please.
This truly is the old guy award. And just to be clear, none of this would have happened if it had not been for the teachers that touched my life at Fargo South High. I am a proud Bruin graduate to this day and a proud parent of two other Bruin graduates. Fargo Public Schools is near and dear to my heart, as many of you are. And thank you, Patty, and all of the state board. But this is truly the old guy award, so I'm going to get out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, and we have nobody signed up this evening to speak from the audience. And that takes us to our report section. We have our FEA report from Laura Haugen Christiansen.
One of the things I like to do is bring in people from various buildings to give us a report, what's going on. And I'm very proud to start with South High tonight.
Thank you very much. I'm the librarian at South. I'm Elizabeth Smith Meyer, and this is Beth Martin, one of the library assistants. And we came to talk about a subject that's really dear to all of our hearts at South High, which is our therapy dog, Millie. And she started coming to South in the spring of 2023. She came for our Bruin Bash, which is a celebration at the end of the year. And then all through the last school year, she came to South as part of our Wellness Wednesday program, which is kind of a mental health and wellness program that we do every Wednesday. And she has been incredibly popular, as you can imagine, at South High. She's a five-year-old burnadoodle. And she really has created even more of a, we've always tried to make a welcoming, comfortable, safe environment for students. And so she really has enhanced that. Here are some pictures of Millie. The first day that she was at South, meeting students, that was at our Bruin Bash, so they were just kind of hanging out and kind of activities day. And then on Wellness Wednesdays, it was more students on their free periods or during passing time, coming in to give a few pets, get some snuggles, and go to class.
Well, I'm Beth, and I work in the library. But I'm also Millie's owner, handler, but mostly her mom. The most heartening thing for me as her handler over the course of the year that we were able to have Millie in the library was the impact that she had on the students and staff. It went above and beyond what I ever expected it would. She had increased number of visits. She was called into classrooms. She went to some crisis situations with counseling services and other things. And what mostly was really near and dear to me, because I love her, she's wonderful, but the students started to call her "our dog." Where's our dog? Is Millie coming? Where's Millie? And so you just start to feel how important she becomes to the students and the staff at the school. And that's what we do. That's what the handlers do for the therapy dogs, so, yeah.
When Millie's in our building, we're always very clear about areas that she will be and areas that she won't be, so that if somebody doesn't want to engage with her, they are absolutely free to do that and are not restricted. Our administration really wanted to be here, but today we have the Hall of Fame at South High. And so they just wanted to just kind of have me share a few points. They have observed the incredibly positive benefits of having Millie, not only to students, but also to staff. And I think that was something we didn't really anticipate just in planning the program, was how much staff would be attached as well. And how our workload gets done. Beth is in the library almost all the time, working on books and doing things that she can still do her job when she has Millie with her. And I'll often see Beth at her desk doing, you know, checking in books. And then I'll have it, there'll be kids on the floor right around Millie, pouring out their little hearts to her. So we definitely, you know, have been able to manage that. And then, of course, seeing the increased traffic in the library from students. They also wanted to note that this is one of the few programs they've ever seen where there have been no negative comments, concerns, nothing negative coming out about having Millie in our building for a year. So we have a couple of students with us that wanted to say something. We heard from a lot of students once Millie stopped coming to our building this fall. And so we just wanted to bring them here to share with you. So Aiden, and do you both want to come up?
I believe Millie is a very important and incredibly loved member of our building. She has brought joy and comfort to students and faculty, and everyone adores her. She isn't just Ms. Martin's pet. She is a very important part of our school environment. Her support is very important for students and staff in creating the safe and welcoming environment that's inclusive to anybody. I still hear my friends and like people in the hallway just complaining about why she isn't there and how like they don't want to go to school now that she isn't here. And I know a lot of people that don't go to libraries much, because a lot of me and my friends, we'd stop by the library like on Wednesdays so we could see Millie and get a new book, which would make us read, so we have a new book to go get on Wednesday. And since Millie hasn't been there, it's kind of been like, what's the point? It's also been really hard hearing like all the mean comments from students to like Ms. Smith Meyer and our administration for her not being there, because they blame them, which is really sad, because it's not their fault. I believe like Millie is helping students. And even if she only helps one student who's struggling with like their grades or mental health or family issues or stress, she deserves a permanent place here. And we all hope for her to return because she is a really remarkable and important part of our family.
Hello, my name is Aiden. I have a few points going off of my stress. Millie helps a lot of us relieve stress. She helps with any mental or mental problems. She doesn't have a bad history. She has a lot of care and passion for people who care. A lot of us use her as a helpful resource before school. And her schedule's very nice. She's only here from the start till noon. I have one request. We want Millie to come back. She has a lot of good reasons at South, and she hasn't done anything too bad. The students at South want her back. She has so many good reasons to come back. So think, think the fact, think about these facts. Thank you.
So just looking at some of the other programs in our community, there are a number of other school districts that have animal therapy programs or dog therapy programs, like West Fargo, Grand Forks, Northern Cass. And then I just grabbed a clip also from Morehead Public Library and just places that dog seem to be, or dog therapy programs seem to be in the schools are really with counselors, libraries, and SROs. And those just really seem like places where not only is the dog there, and that's a great thing, but they actually really enhance the programs and make, you know, students might like us, but they like Millie better. We've accepted this. And so that, you know, when thinking about a policy for our district, that seems like it might be a route to go, to kind of limit to certain kinds of jobs. And we are the first people to advocate for a clear policy and some strict guidelines and making sure that the therapy teams are properly trained. We want this to be a successful program for the Fargo Public Schools. And you, you know, we, Millie and Beth have gone through so much training, and she's just a naturally very calm dog. And so it just really is the perfect fit. And not every dog is. And so it's really important that we have some really clear guidelines about that. And that said, there have been a lot of people really helping us with this. And so I just have some, some names down there. And we really appreciate all of the support that we have received for that. And then, of course, the huge number of South staff and students. And so speaking of that.
I could just share some fun things. Millie has really immersed in the South community. And so we've, you'll see here, we, in the library, she has bookmarks now. They're the most popular bookmarks in the library. And to our surprise, she was nominated for Staff of the Month in September. So that's really, really just near and dear for what she can do for the staff and the students there. So, yeah. Oh, I sure can. Yeah, part of Millie being in the school is to, is for me to have an additional insurance policy for her. This is through a private pet care affiliates, yeah, out of North Carolina. And it's just an additional policy for like a million dollars or something. Yeah. Per occurrence, yeah.
So it costs the district nothing for having this program because we just benefit from the talents and the ownership of Millie. And so we're just hoping to use a donation for covering the cost of insurance going forward. But the, other than that, Beth takes care of the costs for Millie. So some pictures, again, of staff. And I think that was, you know, surprising, just to see how many staff really rely on Millie.
I think when we have had, were planning to have Millie there, we knew that she would have an impact on the students and the student community at South. But I think what was overwhelmingly surprising was the effect she had on the staff. She, the pictures there are all of staff that would come and see her regularly. So I think that's extremely important for the culture of the building, to have that known about her.
So I'm not going to read this slide, don't worry. It says just, there's a lot of things, places that we kind of place this into the strategic initiatives and of course, into Wellness Wednesday, mental health, but even also into learning environments. Like our students said, they come to the library more, which is true, when Millie's there and then are in that like literacy-rich environment. So, you know, we really have fit this into the strategic plan. And then Beth also got invited to classrooms.
Yeah, Millie would, a part of, her, her role morphed in the year, to be totally honest. She became a very active member in some of the classroom environments as well. So she was a model in the photo class and some other things there that you can see. But it just, it, it was a fun thing for her to be there, so.
We've also just have a few notes that we want to share, some highlights from that students wrote about Millie. This was last year. Being able to relax and go to pet a dog for even five minutes is so beneficial. It brings me such a sense of calmness and joy I look forward to every week. It makes me look forward to the day at school. She makes me feel calm and less stressed. When you're overwhelmed or tired, you can sit with her for a couple of minutes and have the energy to go back and learn. She is the comfort students need. I like knowing there's a place at school where if I'm stressed, I have the option to go pet a dog. And then just finally, these are the certificates and the, the therapy documentation that Beth has. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Laura, did you have anything else to share from the FEA report? Okay, so I did want to share that I noticed, so we don't have anything related to Millie on our agenda. And so I think just for transparency, this is going to be a conversation that's brought to governance. So I know that the district is listening to you and putting a lot of time and effort into discussions about this. I can see that it's very, very important. And the board will discuss it more at our governance meeting in December. So thank you very much for being here. Okay, next up would be our, nope, next up would be our administrative report from Dr. Gandhi.
Thank you. In your board packet, you have your strategic plan reflections. Per the request of one of our board members, we did also start including like a one-page summary that just gives you the high-level pieces along with just the detailed monthly reflections that you will have in your reflections as well. I will, before I go on to the next admin report, I'll just see if there's any questions on the monthly reflections. Greg?
The PLC plus pilots mentioned a few times. And in the next steps listed on page four of the document, listed next step as sustain and scale high-impact strategies like the PLC plus pilot across more schools. And I was wondering how we already arrived at the conclusion that it's a high-impact strategy.
Yeah, I will defer to our teaching and learning team. But I think the answer to that is the work that they're doing is tied into our Marzano Teacher Evaluation Framework which identifies the high-impact strategies. I don't know if that's it, or, but I'll go to Bob and Missy.
I can share probably from the elementary, and Bob can share from the secondary. But what has happened is we've been really, for the, I'd say, seems like the last 15 years in education, working on PLCs and what are called cycles. So it has always been to look at student work and the results and make adjustments, go back to our students, maybe more customized to get to the students that weren't getting it, extend the students that have, and go back. But some of, we've been really stuck in using PLC time in planning, discussions. I mean, those are not, those are part of it, but not the whole thing. So what happened was we asked schools to volunteer this summer and go through a training with, I don't know if it's Dr. Keating or Ms. Keating, and on the PLC plus method. And then they started implementing. And what we were surprised at is the conversations now have been quite powerful of how we're getting into what's called cycles. And so I'll give you an example of Clara Barton Hawthorne. They have just felt really good at how it matched our strategic priority of working on formative assessments, getting the assessment as a team, going through the results, making some adjustments week to week, and then retesting on that same result and seeing if kids have moved. And so the results have been more about, are we moving students from a beginning stage through the scales and up? And so those would, that'd be an example. But all of the PLCs and SEEK, SEEK is doing something similar with our schools that are in needs improvement. And again, it's about the cycles and making sure that we can get multiple cycles in in a year instead of as much planning as we were doing before. So that would be our evidence, is that we're getting more cycles in to this date compared to years in the past, if that's helpful. Let Bob share.
Yeah, and then I would just add on to that. I think one of the things that this work has done has really helped us move from what do we want all kids to know and be able to do to really, what are we going to do when they don't? And what are we going to do when they've already got it? And the conversations that are happening across our system because of the PLC pilot are really rich and deep in which they, we see reteaching plans being created. We see opportunities for enrichment as well. So how do we utilize the resources that we have? How do we implement and refresh our thinking around PLCs? And the PLC pilot has really helped us with that across our system.
Go ahead, Reebok.
Greg, if I understood your question correctly, it's a question that I've had too, is education, we use a lot of jargon. And this would just be a good time to call it out. Within our teacher evaluation framework, Marzano's framework, most of the strategies that they use, the certain practices that they want to see instructionally, they're, they have different categories of them, and they're called high-impact strategies. So when, when I see the word "high impact" in any of these documents, I'm not looking at that, has that been a high-impactful strategy for us as based on our goal to the strategic plan? I'm using, I'm looking at that as the category of that practice based off of that previous research. So I don't know if that was the question or not, but.
Yeah, I guess that also helps lead into maybe a follow-up question of, you know, if we're, you know, if this is kind of like in the literature, right, a high-impact strategy, I guess maybe my question would be, like, why would we do a pilot program instead of, like, if it's like, oh, literature says this is really great and high-impact? why start with three instead of 30?
This is kind of the conversation we had at Cabinet and the ongoing conversation that we have in the system too. It's, this is us trying to figure out, do we balance trust and inspire? Where we enforce practices that we want to see across our schools? Or do we want to enforce progress towards goals? And it's been the ongoing kind of conversation. So after we set the strategic plan, unified strategic and operational plan measures last year, our teaching and learning team wanted to be able to provide our principals the opportunity to either say, we know the goals that we're held accountable for as our school and that we're going to land them to our school improvement plan, let us get there themselves. Or we would want to participate in this pilot. So the work with PLC plus, Marzano, and Janelle Keating was offered as a pilot to our principals under that premise because we're balancing, do we want to enforce practices? Or do we want to just say, here's the goal and give our staff that autonomy to get there? So that was why we had those three campuses that decided to participate. It was optional.
Did we use any sort of piloting system for the common formative assessments?
At the elementary level, the common formative assessments are, I mean, can be put in and used with a device, but they are paper that they can download. And then we use an ELO tracker for our common assessments, which is just a spreadsheet right now. I do think there is value in us thinking about how to use Power School as our tracker because we'd also like parents to see results as we go forward. But this was our first year using the common formative assessments. And so all of us are using a similar spreadsheet system. So you can see all the third-grade classes at once at each building so that they can have that discussion. And they're getting kind of fancy too on our spreadsheets, just how we mark things in color too, red, green, yellow, so we know how we're doing progress for it. But we have not used like Power School or Purchase a System for it.
So are the common formative assessments common between schools or just?
Common for the district. All third grade have the same ones that were made with our course captains and our math facilitator. And then the same for reading.
Bob, choose on that.
Sure, and then at the secondary, really what we've done is we've allowed our course-alike teams to really start with, what are those essential learning outcomes? What are the proficiency scales that would show the kids understand and have mastered that? And then the assessments are built both at the building level or dependent upon some of the smaller teams where I might be a singleton at one building and there's a singleton at another building. Those will be common across there just so that we have individuals who can have the conversations around the assessments. So it's really starting with those teams, building those assessments, coming back to those essential learning outcomes.
I don't know, I don't know how we'd be able to pilot or provide optional participation in the common formative assessment if we're trying to create a universal metric that we're trying to use to evaluate progress towards those goals. So that's where the common assessment comes in. If not, then the only data that we would have for ELO proficiency for that measure in our strategic plan would be only through what's reported in the classroom instruction, which could then create a lot of variance across all of our schools. So that's the reason why that measure consistently applied across all schools had to lead to the development of a common formative assessment. But I don't think that optional participation would allow it because then one school, one teacher might have far more data points than another.
Yeah, I think the reason I bring those two topics up is that they seem, based on reading the strategic reflections and what we're going to get to in our only business item, they seem pretty hand-in-hand, right? Like, I mean, if you're like PLC plus is going to be talking about student data, it seems like, wow, look, we have this wonderful common formative assessment. Isn't that a great data point that we can all talk about together? But only some got PLC plus and everybody got the common formative assessment.
Great question. So there's two components to that. One is PLC plus is working with, doing side-by-side coaching on our principals and leadership teams on what the PLC should focus on. The common formative assessments, whatever frequency they're given, I'm not sure if they're given at the end of every unit or not, they don't align with the weekly PLCs. So a weekly PLC, in theory, should be, if you're looking at your weekly data, whether it's exit ticket data or whatever the case is, and then creating your enrichment and intervention plans accordingly. Now, you can have a PLC after a common formative assessment and then take a look at that data and then do the same piece. But we have PLCs on a week-to-week basis and then the common formative assessment's not. So that's why there's a little bit misalignment there.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Kristin?
So under the, on page 19, under professional development, they were, this talks about, they strongly agreed or agreed that their opportunities, they had opportunities to reflect on ways to incorporate their learning into practice. Do we have anecdotal data in that survey at all, talking about what the neither agree or disagree, disagree or strongly disagree were looking for?
I'll defer to teaching and learning or Jeff because we've had a couple of different surveys or we're collecting PD feedback through a couple of different feedback pieces. So I don't know which there would be that one.
Jeff, do you want to go first?
Yes, Madam President, Dr. Gandhi, members of the board. So when we have surveys, we have two tools that we're using to really do our best to keep the pulse on how things are going for professional development. So in Kick Up, we have an ongoing survey that looks at every single PD that is given to our staff. And at this time, I think there's over, close to 80 by now, that our staff have had the opportunity to participate in since we started the beginning of the school year. And in addition to that, probably what you're referring to is the survey that we gave staff as a standalone for the professional development that they've taken so far and the professional development they would like to see, and then the mode in which they would get that. So the answer, not to ramble too much, is we do have the actual comments that we look through in addition to just whether they like the, agree or disagree or strongly agree. We do have the exact comments, if that's what you're referring to, that we really dig into in addition to just overall, what was the score in that area.
Yeah, that's helpful. And then on the next one, it said 70% of participants plan to implement what they've learned into their practice. And, you know, there are 37 that didn't necessarily find it helpful. So I'm just hoping that we were taking that data from those folks too and incorporating it into the learning.
Yeah, if I could add something that we've done this year is the Human Capital Department, Teaching and Learning, and EdJustice, we've established a cross-functional team that we meet. We've met at least three times so far this year to constantly dig into this data, really not just the overall results, but the comments and to push forward what we've learned and really dig into that and figure out what can we learn and how can we make it better.
I think, great question, and I think this is a good time to kind of highlight too. One of the things that we're starting to see this year, so the way that Dr. McKenna talked about it, we have, after every professional development, our staff that participate in that professional development take a feedback survey specific to that. That's the agree, disagree, but then they also have the time for the anecdotal comments. We are starting to see a difference in the data that is much higher for, after each PD from the staff that went to that PD than when we do the once or twice-a-year survey on what are your feeling about PD. So we're trying to reconcile that. And one of the conversations that we've had, not necessarily that we're going to do this or not, is also thinking about like going into next school year, do we use the term professional development for the opportunities our teachers have to self-select and do required development for some of the professional development that we just have to provide as a state? Because as we disaggregate those datas and look at the discrepancy, why is it that post-PD, everyone's giving a much higher rating than the once-or-twice-a-year survey that we're getting afterwards? Some of the anecdotal feedback that we're getting from rounding and other pieces is that, it's on the PD stuff that we are state-required to provide. So that's one of the conversations that we've just started recently. Not sure where Teaching and Learning will land on it, but just wanted to call that out too.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Dr. Gandhi, to you and your team. Oh, do you have another comment?
Yeah, nothing more to the reflections, but I just did have one more admin report. At your stations at the dais today, you do have a copy of our 2023-24 annual report. That is a tremendous resource of all things Fargo Public Schools, everything from student and staff accomplishments, but it's going to be a year in our rears. But it is a very valuable document. It takes a long time and a lot of hard work for our communications team. So I just want to celebrate them and commend them for another great annual report as well. But just also wanted to point out that that's at your desk today.
And if you study this, you might do well in next year's trivia test when we're having dinner at this bar. Just a little FYI. Okay, anything else? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much to you and your team for providing that information. Since that was a reflection, we don't take any action on it. So we now move to the consent agenda. Robin?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the Human Capital addendum.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Robin, a second from Jason. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Yes, any opposition, same sign? And that motion passes 9-0. And we have now moved on to our business item this evening. And I will turn to Dr. Gandhi to introduce this to us.
Thank you. Tonight, we have our result monitoring for Strategic Initiative Six, which is our continuous improvement and accountability strategic initiative. We did do some things a little bit different based off just the feedback and our learning experiences from Strategic Initiative One and Two that have been monitored this year. First and foremost, we did make sure that every measure that is in Strategic Initiative Six has its own independent graph under the Evaluation of Data section. So we did go through and put each of that out, so hopefully that'll provide clarity. And then after that, on the Alignment of Action section, we did just embed the work that's already in Cascade because it shows you the work that we're doing specific to each measure along with the narrative after that. And then for the other sections, we just provided an overall summary, calling out those measures or if there was anything that was specific to any one measure. Missy will talk about this, but there was one graph in the Evaluation of Data measure that we brought in about scale scores. After the board packet was posted, did receive some feedback like that graph may not be as explained or as easy to understand if you don't know all the educational jargon. So we went, we did go back and, Missy will go through this in Cascade and provide a little legend and explanation of how to read that graph and what that means specific to that measure as well. So without further ado, I will hand it over to Missy to go through Strategic Initiative Six because Bob Volin told her.
All right, just want to go through the report tonight. And so continuous improvement is something that we hope we are modeling all the time as we go through the school year. It's not something that we just stop and look at at the end of the school year. And so as we go through the report for monitoring, as Rupak said, we went through and used the measurements revaluation of each item right from Cascade as we went forward. The policy work is going to be 100% because we have finished the policies for last year. And now we're working on our next batch that will be due by May as we go through. But we constantly, every month, are going through policies and reaching out. And I don't know if you want me to go through each one because you have had the report in front of you rounding the measurements. The Combined Principal Meeting, we just finished our first principal meeting where we were able to sit down with principals and go through data and understand. It is state data with the interim assessment, the NDSA plus. And what we wanted them to understand is how we look at student groups so that we'd filter for our top three groups that are performing the lowest in the recent years is Native American, Black, African-American, and Special Education. And so we had them in our last principal meeting, go through and do the filters, discuss with the cluster of principals together, what might be next steps? What are you seeing in your data? What resources do we have as we go forward? And then we'll do it again in January. And in January, as we go forward, again, we want to start incorporating what we'd call our ELOs or our common formative assessments discussion around that. So that is that piece for that one. Tara is going to help me out with the general counsel pieces. I don't know, Tara, if there's anything you want to add to what we have there?
Nope, the only thing that I would say right now is that the only out-of-pocket expense that we have had for general counsel services this year is a $250 charge to post in the paper when we sold our old building. Other than that, we have had no costs for non-litigation services.
One of the next things as we go forward, and they kind of go together, is the next two that deal with Title IX and with our individual education plans. And so both of those have to do with our paperwork, but both of them also depend on systems. And so for Title IX, we are just at the point where we have been integrating to start using something called Guardian, which is a software to monitor the paperwork when we go through what is a Title IX complaint. There actually is a lot of rules and procedures that have to be followed and paperwork. And so when we go through that, we realize trying to manage it, whether we did it through Microsoft 365 or we did it through Google, that becomes difficult because you have lots of different pieces coming in and out and making sure students or the paperwork stays together. So we do believe that moving to Guardian will actually be better for us historically to keep that documentation. Then the unexpected outcome is that Guardian is a generic platform for this kind of workflow work. And we could probably use it for other things similar, which is a bonus. And that might be threat assessments as we go forward. The next piece was, we are piloting special education software this year. And that is also been trying at times as we're going through trying out new software. But we also know with how much technology has changed, the software provides some, I support for teachers of being able to pre-populate documents instead of retyping names and addresses and some of those pieces, which is time savings. It also has ways to file. So it has been going well, but I will tell you, the state has also told us that they're switching our Power School system to Infinite Campus in two years. And so that's going to make us have some discussions this year because the questions we'll ask is, what will the state provide all districts? Are they going to provide the special education software? If it's yes, then we probably owe it to ourselves to review that one also as it goes through. So those are just those two that deal with systems. We also have the 504s. And one of the reasons we like the Ed Plan is they provide a separate area for 504 plans, which is also a legal document. So that would be the sad part about switching if that would happen. But the 504 plans have been done through Ed Plan. We also are monitoring that we are turning in a report to you each month on the strategic initiative which you just covered earlier and that there are six strategic initiatives and that each one is turned in an update. And so we just monitor that we're on track. The ELO work and the common assessments, that we've already talked quite a bit about. But I think the tool that is also being introduced, which really serves as a common assessment for the state, is the NDA plus interim assessment. And I apologize, when I had put it in there, I did not give you this nice little blue chart which explains what the scores are in the chart below with our sample scores. So performance levels, if someone is scoring a one on the interim assessment in the fall, they're saying, oh, they probably need support at their current grade level and might be missing some skills. missing some skills. If they're scoring a five, they're demonstrating probably mastery of the grade level content and maybe ability to go the next level. So what we have done this fall is I've, we have done it in a principal meeting and then separately, meeting with principals, is this data has not been normed by the state yet because they need to, Pearson has just switched over as our provider. Now, they believe they're going to need to give the fall summative tests, do a norming process, and to keep getting tighter about aligning to the standards for North Dakota. But I will tell you, what we have done is we've gone through grade level results at each building, and we've checked, okay, these kids scored a one. Does it match the data we have, and do they need support? If they're a five, and I will tell you, there's very few fives out there, is that child demonstrating ability? Yes, we can say that. So we're feeling a little more confident in what we're seeing, but what we really like is that the tool allows us to see where the state's at at an interim, where the district's at, and where a building's at. The building then can even go further and go down to student data as we go forward. One building actually passed out the student report to the parents at conferences this year to see what the parents thought of that. And so there's going to be some nice options coming, but it is not normed yet, so that is why it is, we haven't put district practices out completely on it. The data is small. That is as big as I could get the chart to be. I'm sorry. But I just wanted to show you that they do give us lots of ways to view the data. This is not on a public website for the interim. What we're most excited about is that they believe they'll be able to show growth when we take it again in the winter. So we don't have to wait till the summative test in the spring to make decisions and shift our practices. The next part for the Cognia accreditation, the piece that we go through and do is we always go through and do a survey each month of four to five Cognia standards. And all buildings are doing it a little different, but most buildings are, the rule is you have to at least have your leadership team comment or give it to your whole building. We want it to be a discussion around how they feel things are going. Sometimes there's even questions regarding, right, district leadership, building leadership, teacher leadership. And so there's different questions, and there's 30 standards total. It is a requirement to complete those 30 standards for each building in order to be accredited. And so we will have that part of the practice yearly. Next school year, we will be reevaluated by Cognia to be accredited. And so that one cannot change until we go through that accreditation process. So those are all of our measurements from that section. Then I, Dr. Gandhi, I might need your help just on the alignment section.
So this chart is what you have access to in Cascade as well, but it has it broken down by the results, the measures, and then which specific actions we're taking that contribute to each of those measures, so you can see them in terms of a strategy. I think, given that you have access to this, I don't want to go through all of the remaining sections, but I do just want to highlight two things that Missy talked about. As we know, we're in this first year of this Unified Strategic Operational Plan, and as we look at what those measures are going to be for next year and we move forward, I'll just put in another plug for why we have these different components under our definition of reasonable progress, by highlighting two specific things that Missy said. One is, last February and March, when we were developing this plan, there was across, not just for our school district, but across the nation, every school district has some work to do around Title IX because the policies have continued to change and requires for staff development. And so as part of that, we set strategies to create an internal website on Title IX, do some extensive training. We haven't been able to do that this year. And the reason we haven't been able to do that is because federal regulations around Title IX have been changing. And our guidance, even Guardian software, has been kind of limited in terms of what we could do, so we're kind of like waiting around some of those pieces, right? But then the second piece I want to talk about is just ED Plan. Like Missy talked about, if you, for those board members who are part of kind of negotiations and some of our other conversations, we know that the special education workload has been a huge conversation, not in our district, but not only in our district, but across the nation, and therefore, we talked about the work, special education work analysis tool that we put into place. But we were also, last year, brought together a whole bunch of special education staff to look at ED Plan to see, can we ease that paperwork? After making that commitment, we've started some of that work to transition to ED Plan. We've been getting feedback. We went through multiple different platforms. And this year now, we're being told by DPI that as we transition to Infinite Campus, they might have a product that is a separate product, but that's coming with Infinite Campus. So now we have to, after going through all of that work, reevaluate whether that's an ongoing cost that we, as a district, want to go through again or not. So that's the reason why we have some of those components of maintaining flexibility amongst competing priorities and other pieces, because it's some of those dynamics that even though we plan for the work ahead of time and try to be as strategic as we can, ED Plan may not be the best use of our resources moving forward if the state's going to give us another alternative plan, even though we've done all this work with our staff, too. So that's why we are trying to keep this framework where we can have some of these set goals for our organization, but also recognize that sometimes there's things beyond our control that we are trying to figure out how to best align our resources as well.
It'll just be me repeating myself as we go through each section, so I guess I would open it up to questions.
Robin?
To bring it on the floor, I would like to make a motion, and I have two comments. So I move that we accept the reasonable progress that has been made on RSI VI for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you. Second. Okay. So we have a motion from Robin and a second from Nikki, and the floor is now open for discussion. Robin, go ahead.
Yep. I want to really thank administration for your increased efforts and transparency. We have never received this comprehensive of reports ever since I've been on the board, but I'm going to tell you, this report was actually very easy for me to interpret. A lot of the recent reports haven't been, and I've been doing this a while, so I thank you for this new format. I didn't have to read it and reread it, so thank you. Secondly, with the Cognia visits, a lot of board members haven't experienced that before, and that's every three years, if I remember right, and board every six years. And so the board is pretty involved in that process. So when they visit, we'll get to learn a lot about that accreditation process, and I think, is the community as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It has changed that they don't come on site anymore. We do not know what that looks like, but it did take about a half day of board time. They do a board interviews, community interviews, parent interviews. So I expect that to be still part of the process.
And do we have any other comments? Did you, was that both of yours? Okay. Got it. Any other discussion questions? Nothing? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I would echo what Robin said. This is very thorough, and I really appreciate the addition of the extra box with the blue stuff in it that helped explain the levels there. So that brought even more clarity to us. And I think we're ready for a roll? Roll call. Berklin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Gullickson?
Yes.
Jason Nelson?
Yes.
Kristin Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Olenderger?
Yes.
Christensen-Mineer? Yes. And that motion passes nine zero. Okay. We are now down to board reports. And so the first one under board reports is our superintendent search update, and I'll turn to Ann Marie Campbell for that.
Thank you. As a reminder, at the last board meeting, you directed me to solicit proposals from search firms for your consideration in your superintendent search. I am happy to report that we have received seven proposals from firms across the nation who are willing to assist you in that effort. I did print those for you. They are at your chair tonight, sent them electronically to you as well. Wanted to give you both options in case you're a paper person and want to review those and mark them up. So those are at your chairs for you, along with some summaries that provided you in case you want to breeze over some summaries before you dive into the multiple pages of information. The ad hoc committee that was formed at the last meeting will be meeting on Monday to begin their work. They'll review those proposals and also look through some other materials and bring you guys back some recommendations at the December 10th board meeting. So that is the update I have, but I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Well, it looks like we have lots of fun reading material as we head into our long weekend. Thank you, Ann Marie, for pulling all that together.
You're welcome. And I wanted to get those to you before the December 10th meeting, because it might take you guys a little bit to get through all of those, so there's many pages of reading.
Just a wee bit.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay. And now we are on to committee liaison and correspondence reports. Would it be, oh, anybody want to volunteer to go first?
Nikki?
I've got mine prepared, so it's easy to do. November 14th, we met for negotiations. November 18th, we held governance. November 19th, we attended the legislative meeting. And Kristin and I also attended the district advisory committee meeting, the first one. November 20th, I attended the NDSBA Brunch and Learn. I also am working with two of my liaison schools, and we are going to meet mid-December. And today, I met with a constituent regarding the long-term facilities plan.
Thank you, Nikki. Namaal?
Thank you. I, well, I did went to McKinley today. It was really fun. I get to meet Principal Jensen. She is incredible, and been in the district for 27 years, and now she has McKinley for, like, what, this is her second year, first year? Not sure yet, but I'm working on it. I have not toured the facility yet, but December 6th, I will be. And I get to meet everybody else. It's almost like Madison. When I first went over there, I looked at it, I was like, am I on Madison? Or where am I at, you know? Because it, and then she said they're similar, they're very similar, you know, like the way that they build, building-wise, you know, and so forth, and the classrooms are only 12. It was very interesting. But other than that, I'm continuing to explore everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Namaal. Jason?
I've had some correspondence with a few constituents over the last couple of weeks, and then just rescheduling some of the meetings out of the cancel when I was ill, so just working on that, nothing else to report.
Okay. Thank you. Ally?
I had the opportunity to connect with some folks in the music department over at Davies, really just kind of talking about some of the proposed changes at the middle school level. I was able to follow up with Bob and kind of share some of those summarized concerns from folks. And then also, a huge thank you to Bob for the increased communication that he shared out with folks around those concerns. And also had the opportunity to connect with my kiddo's homeschool principal at Longfellow. He wanted to share with me some of the things that the elementary principals had started working on in terms of our search for a new superintendent. So he shared some fun things around that and had a really great discussion with him there, attended committee meetings, and that is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ally. Let's go to Kristin.
Yeah. Like Nikki said, I was at the, we attended the district advisory committee meeting. I attended the November NSBA Brunch and Learn, which was very interesting this time, the legislative breakfast, we were all there. I was at the PTA meeting at Discovery and then volunteered in the book fair last week, which was super fun. And then some phone calls with residents, one regarding boundaries, one regarding middle school schedule, and then one with regarding the therapy dog program at South.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. Melissa?
Yeah. On November 13th, Tara and I were presiding judges over the Discovery Enriched English courtroom trials, and so it was really neat to see our students in action, and they had phenomenal arguments and really neat presentations. So that was a great day. And then otherwise, I just really have negotiations updates. We've met twice since our last board meeting on the 14th, and then just yesterday on the 25th. We have been going through the contract and with Cabinet, really talking about some of our priorities for this season. And I just want to thank everybody from Cabinet, because you've been really prepared, and you've given us so much information, and it's gone so smoothly. So I'm just very grateful for all of your work so far, and that's all.
Thank you. Greg?
I visited Jefferson Elementary last week. What a great building. I really like that building. And, you know, I got to interact with a lot of educators and, you know, see students not running, but, you know, maybe moving a little quicker than I can. But nice to see them, you know, enjoying that building, and then it's just filled with a lot of very obviously passionate and dedicated educators, so that was a great visit. And since our last board meeting, I've met twice with Bill and James Hand about the long-range facilities plan, just lots of pretty in-depth conversations, preparing for future planning committee meetings.
Thank you, Greg. Robin?
Thank you. I want to thank Jackie Gap and LeAnn Hansen for answering some questions about Title III. We have a Kennedy teacher who's taken an educational governance course, and Title III, of course, is multilingual now, so it was way over my head, so thank you for answering those so thoroughly. Of course, we had our GAC legislator info session. I want to thank everybody, we had almost everybody there. Big shout out to Amy Patterson for really organizing it. We will debrief that at our upcoming GAC meeting. Just this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to tell Ann Marie yet, I did do a quick interview for childcare, since that's on our legislative document, with Public News Service. I told them they could not use me as a school board member representative, but you used me as Boys and Girls Club because you hadn't given me the ability to do that, but now you have. So I will let them know. And so Public News Service, they provide the interviews to public broadcasting across North Dakota and Minnesota. I want to spend a little bit more time on federal legislation. I was shared a couple, three main topics that we should look at with our new administration. Issue number one is the inclusion of a $5 billion voucher program in the next tax package. The voucher program is based on legislation known as ECHA or ESSA, not ESSA, Educational Choice for Children Act, and would operate by requiring every state to have a minimum of $10 million set aside to subsidize private and religious education and homeschooling in their state. Here's the catch: The state, in turn, would be prohibited from requiring private schools or other entities to meet any state or federal standards, including complying with any civil rights protections for students. So that goes back to something we talked about as far as who would private institutions accept, so our entry requirements are different. Issue number two is eliminating, eliminating, or reducing title programs. The House Republicans have proposed eliminating Title II, which is Americans with Disability Act funding. Title III, we just talked about that with our multilingual, and then cutting Title I, which is our low-income schools, by 25%. It's not likely that these will be eliminated, but we can expect some cuts in the proposals. Those are major funding sources for us at the federal level. Issue number three, changing the structure of Medicaid. This was also a topic that we talked about at our legislative information session. The ruling party wants to look for some tax cuts, so right now, their main target is Medicaid. School-based Medicaid sits on the shoulder of successful Medicaid programs, and if they're successful in trying, and they've done this before, to block rent Medicaid or reduce funding for Medicaid in other ways, this will very much affect and affect negatively our critical special education services and other health services. So I'll try to keep on top of some of these. I thank Rupak for really helping me stay in touch with some of the federal stuff, but part of our charge is to look for federal programs as well, and we'll see some big things we need to follow. So I will be recommending that we reach out to our nationally-elected officials on this as well.
Okay. Thanks. Sounds like a heavy load there.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much for sharing your reports. From the president's report today, on November 18th, our Governance Committee our governance committee met. Since our last meeting, I have also met with the music teachers at Ben Franklin, which is probably a very similar conversation to what other people have had. And I also do thank Bob very much for sending out some of that information. I think that brought a lot of transparency and relief for our music teachers. I also attended the musical at South, which was very, very funny and very entertaining. And then certainly a highlight, I would say, is actually the meeting that I just had prior to this meeting, where I was able to sit down with Jeff, Amber, Tara, and Laura. And we started talking about some of the changes that we want to the leave bank committee. And we settled on some pretty decent language. And I will be bringing that to governance at our next meeting. So as a board, you can look forward to that probably. We were thinking January, I think you'd maybe see something pop up on agenda. But that's all I have for my report. Our next meeting is December 10th. It is 6:37 PM and we are adjourned. Have a nice.